Good evening, everyone. Hello. Welcome. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much. It is so heartwarming to see a full house here tonight. Welcome to our City Council Successor Agency, to the Redevelopment Agency Housing Authority Regular Meeting. Tonight is December 8th. We do not have any Assembly Bill 2449 teleconference requests. Tonight, we are joined by the White Oaks Brownie Troop, number 61920, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So ladies, if you'd like to come up here, and you can start us off, please. Please rise and join us for the pledge. Thank you so much to our Brownie Troop 61920. Now we'll move on to item four, changes to the order of the agenda. Anything from staff this evening? Mr. City Mayor and Manager?
No changes from staff this evening, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Any changes from my colleagues? All right, seeing none, the agenda stands. We will now move to Council Communications and Announcements, and I just wanted to recognize a few people in the room. We have several elected officials and staffers here tonight. We have Hector Camacho from the County Board of Education, Nicole Fernandez, Deputy Mayor from San Mateo, Stacy Jimenez, former mayor and current council member of Foster City. We have Peter Stevenson, the mayor of Burlingame here. Thank you. We also have several former mayors in the room. I see Dawn Eaton walking in, Inga Teagle-Doorty, Mike King walking in. Welcome. This is so exciting. We have also former mayors Ron Collins, Mark Olbert, Laura Palmer-Lohan, Andy Klein, and Cameron Jackson. So, so exciting to have so many former mayors joining us. We're really thrilled to have you here for our, we're going to take a centennial photo in a little bit. We also, I also would like to recognize Stephanie Anderson is here with the Office of Supervisor Ray Mueller, Joan Dentler from the Office of Senator Josh Becker, Mariah Kalhoff from Assembly Member Diane Pappin's office. And we also have a representative, I believe, here from Congressman Kevin Mullen's office. Carol Ong is maybe joining us. Oh, hi, it's Bruno. Bruno, yeah, Bruno's here. Thank you, Bruno. Perfect. So with that, any other council communications? I see council member back.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm just gonna, I just want to wish my, it's my daughter's birthday today. It's her 21st birthday, so I just want to wish my daughter Jane 20, happy 21st birthday. She's away at school, but give her a shout out. So, thank you.
Any other council communications? Great. Okay. We will now move on to public comments. Persons wishing to address the City Council on member matters not on the posted agenda may do so at this time. Each speaker is limited to two minutes. We typically take public comments in the room first, again, for items not on the agenda, and then we will open it up to our Zoom callers. Oh, no, actually, we're not taking comment on Zoom tonight, just in person. So any comments in person this evening? Yes, I do have two slips at the moment. First up is Ron Collins, and then you'll be followed by Mark Olbert.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, and members of the council. Tonight is what we've always called Reorganization Night. We're here to witness the selection of a new mayor and vice mayor, and in tonight's case, it appears we may be making a historic moment in that regard. But I'm also here to talk this evening and talk about my appreciation and gratitude for someone who has meant a great deal to this community, our city manager, Jeff Malpe, who will be retiring soon. All of you on the dais know how much respect I have for Jeff, and most, if not all, city staff know how I feel about him. And of course, Jeff knows how I feel about him. But tonight, I want the residents of San Carlos to know how truly blessed we have been to have him guiding this city for the last 15 years. When Jeff was hired in 2010, the city was facing a host of challenges: the contentious transition of our policing services to the sheriff's office, a difficult dissolution of our long-term fire services, JPA, with Belmont, and a serious budget crisis. No sooner had these issues then been settled, than along came the battle with PG&E in Line 47, followed by Measure V, the gun store controversy, the COVID pandemic, and eventually another possible search for a new fire services partner. Through it all, Jeff was to me like a sixth council member. Jeff led San Carlos through good and challenging times. He balanced the budget, built surpluses, helped pay down our unfunded pension liabilities. City managers come and go all the time, but we have been exceptionally fortunate to have Jeff at the helm for as long as we have. There's a line from a movie called Starman where the main character, an alien who crash-lands to Earth, observes that human beings are at their very best when things are at their worst. The character is played by an actor also named Jeff, Jeff Bridges. Well, Jeff is our star man. He has consistently been at his best when San Carlos was facing its worst. So let me close by saying, thank you, Jeff. I love you. I'll miss you, and I'm proud to call you my friend.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much, Ron. Do we have another public comment, Crystal, from former mayor Olbert? Welcome.
Chair. That's okay. I don't have any prepared remarks tonight, but the essence of what I want to say, Ron actually covered in great detail, which is to recognize how significant a city manager that Jeff has been and all the time that he's worked for the people of San Carlos. I didn't work for him for the entire time that he was city manager, but for many of the years that he was. And he, he always impressed me as a very outstanding, upstanding kind of guy. I particularly admired the fact that he was one of the few city managers that I was aware of or familiar with in San Mateo County who actually understood the concept that there were, there was a division of responsibilities and that the council and the city manager were like two balloons, and they had to make sure that they didn't cross into each other's territories. I still vividly remember one strategic planning meeting when he addressed the entire council and said, "Guys, we've actually addressed a lot of the problems that the cities had. We're in fairly good financial situation. You have to tell me what you want to do, okay?" It was kind of interesting that he had to actually tell us that, and I'm glad that you folks have taken the lead in doing things like changing the downtown to try and implement some of that stuff. But probably my best memory of Jeff, Ron touched on briefly with the Line 147 PG&E problem. People don't remember, when that first broke, there was the notion that, it broke base because there was an email from an engineer inside of PG&E saying, "I think we may have a San Bruno situation brewing in San Carlos." And I vividly remember being in Jeff's office, and he was very concerned because he wanted to keep the city safe, but also he wasn't sure about what his authority was in terms of ordering PG&E to shut down the pipeline. And he was struggling with that, as a good city manager should. And I looked at him and said, "Jeff, you know what the right thing is. You know what you want to do. We will back you. Do it." And he did, even though the courts later threw it out. But that's, you know, I admire the fact that he did that. So Jeff, enjoy the next phase of your life, and I too will always count you as a friend, and I will always remember the sometimes very fascinating arguments and debates we had in your office.
We also had a lot of good talks about Star Trek and Star Wars as well, as I recall, so thank you. Thank you also, Mr. Mayor.
Much lovely comments. Well deserved. Crystal, any other public comments?
I don't have any other slips for items not on the agenda tonight.
Okay, great. Thank you. That moves us to item seven, the Consent Calendar. Do any of my colleagues wish to pull an item from consent? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve City Council Consent Calendar Items A through D.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Crystal, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Leighton?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Venkatesh?
Yes.
And Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that moves us to item eight, A, Appoint City of San Carlos's 2026 Mayor. Before we do that, I'm going to make some very brief comments, outgoing remarks. What a year it has been. Serving as your centennial mayor has been an experience I will never forget. It has been incredible to spend an entire year celebrating with our community, beginning with our Adult Community Center Centennial Luncheon, to the Week of the Family, to the return of the San Carlin of the Year Awards Gala, unveiling the Time Capsule at the Museum of San Carlos History, our Centennial Hometown Day Celebration with the parade and the incredible drone show, the heartwarming stories recorded for our StoryCorps project, cutting the ribbon on our beautiful new mural downtown, visiting historical markers, participating in the Agents of Discovery program, hosting neighborhood block parties, and viewing the special documentary movies created to Remember It All. San Carlos celebrated the entire year of 2025, and it was epic. This year has been a time to celebrate our past, appreciate our present, and also plan for our future. I am proud of the significant progress we made across many critical projects, and tonight I'm going to highlight just three. First, our downtown planning effort. After more than three years of planning and consulting with our community, we approved several short-range and long-range planning documents this year to make our city's vision for Laurel Street a reality. Second is our Holly 101 Interchange Project. Councilmember Rack and I served on a subcommittee this year to put this critical safety project back on track. Our city staff launched community meetings, renewed partnerships, and just last week presented our request for $82 million in Measure A and Measure W funds to the Transit Authority, which is a giant leap forward. Third, our projects for our children. Our kids remain a top priority for our work. This year, we launched a new parks master plan, and we expanded our safe routes to school by building new sidewalks and crosswalks. Through our innovative childcare grant program, we are funding the expansion of childcare facilities throughout our community, and we banned the recreational sale of Whippets to protect our children from these highly addictive sedatives. But nothing is more important to me than the mental health of our youth. As a co-founder of the San Mateo County Mayor's Mental Health Initiative, started in 2022, I was proud that our work continued this year. San Carlos hosted a free mental health first aid training for adults working with youth. Our incredible Parks and Rec staff and our Youth Advisory Council hosted a teen wellness retreat for 125 teens. In September, we hosted a Be Sensitive, Be Brave for Mental Health training for high school students. We even worked with the state to host the Never a Bother billboard on Highway 101, a statewide suicide prevention campaign designed for youth by youth. We have done so much good work to be proud of, too much to mention tonight, but I do want to be clear that none of our accomplishments could have been realized without the dedication and hard work of our city staff. They are incredible people who work hard every day to make a positive impact on the lives of our residents, and we would not be the city of good living without them. I am also thankful for the opportunity to serve alongside my colleagues on the council. I am grateful for Councilmember Rack's participation on the Holly 101 Subcommittee, for Councilmember Dugan's drive on housing and traffic mitigation, and Councilmember Leighton's work on infrastructure financing and his insight on our parks' planning process. I especially want to thank Vice Mayor Venkatesh, who was by my side this entire year, moving many critical projects forward. I also want to be sure to thank my family and friends for their grace and support this year. And tonight, with so many former mayors joining us, I want to thank you for all of your hard work on behalf of our city as well. To our community, I say thank you for the opportunity to serve you as mayor. It has been a remarkable experience, and I look forward to our continued work ahead together. Thank you. Okay, so my schedule says we now receive public comments, so we will open it up to public comments on this item of appointing a mayor. Do we have any public comments on this item, Crystal?
Yes, I do have one for this item. Twisha Anand, if you can approach the podium, please.
Good evening, City Council, neighbors, and community leaders. I'm a San Carlos resident, and I serve on the City Planning and Transportation Commission. But tonight, I'm speaking primarily as someone who was called to service because of two incredible women who are present here today. I first met Mayor McDowell five years ago. At that time, as a mom to young kids, my only reference for a mayor was the one on the little blue truck. But sitting down with Sarah changed everything for me. At the time, I was, in a stereotypical Bay Area fashion, CEO of a social impact startup focused on mental health. Mayor McDowell encouraged me to widen my lens. She showed me how to take these critical issues, mental health, childcare, and community well-being, and address them on a macro level, creating the kind of grassroots impact that truly transforms our local communities. Thank you, Mayor McDowell, for showing me and showing all our girls what tireless compassionate leadership looks like. And now I look with great optimism at our Vice Mayor Venkatesh, soon to be mayor. I first got to know her through our Indian Women's Group, and I was immediately struck by her simplicity and kindness. But I quickly learned that behind that fun spirit is a fearless leader. Pranita, you have taught me that one can make hard decisions with kindness. As you make history tonight, as the first South Asian mayor of San Carlos, you're proving to women of color everywhere that these spaces belong to us too. It is entirely because of the encouragement of these two women that I stepped up, first to the Centennial Planning Committee, and now to the Planning and Transportation Commission. It is because of their inspiration that I stand here today as an advocate for equity, affordable housing, and true diversity assimilation in our communities. San Carlos was truly fortunate to be led by both of you during our centennial year. San Carlos was truly fortunate to be led by both of you during our centennial year. There is a saying that a leader is not known by who she leads, but by how many more leaders she creates. Looking around this room and looking at my own journey, your legacy is already written. Thank you, Mayor McDowell, and congratulations to our new mayor, Venkatesh.
Thank you so much, Twisha. Any other public comments?
I don't have any other slips, but if you'd like to approach the podium for this item, that would be the time. Okay? I don't see any other hands.
Okay.
Good timing.
All right, how about that? All right, well, Sarah, I worked to get down here to tell you, you did an incredible job this year. You're an incredible mayor. The sincerity, I think when I think about your mayorship, I think about the sincerity with which you serve as mayor. The, you know, you do everything so well, so professionally. It's a joy to watch as another public servant, but then to watch the way that you serve the community and the way that you interact with it, it's, especially this year with San Carlos having its 100th anniversary, there were so many events that I would see you at, and you had to be out in front of everybody and serving the community. And the one thing that I just appreciated so much was it was never about you. It was about the community and your love of the community, and it's that sincerity as mayor that I just, I want to thank you for all the work you've done on so many issues. I think a lot of you might not realize this, but Mayor McDowell also worked with other electeds. It can be a tough job being elected. People can be pretty hard on you. And she really worked for years, too, trying to prioritize the mental health of people, which is just incredible. So on behalf of the County Board of Supervisors, I have a certificate of appreciation signed by all the supervisors, and congratulations on a wonderful year.
Thank you so much, Supervisor. Okay, so next it says, do we, are we doing, I see you guys have your lights on, but was that?
I would like to make comments, too.
It's not on the schedule, but okay.
You're the mayor, you can amend the schedule.
So amended, yes. Councilmember Rack.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I'll be brief, but I just wanted to congratulate Mayor McDowell for her strong leadership during her 100th anniversary. And yes, it was a year of great celebration, but it was also a year of great success and great accomplishments. And I did want to, I know you highlighted the downtown, but I feel like it was more than three years that we have worked on this together. It's been, I feel like, five years, but I'm excited about your leadership and how you brought us through this and where we're going with that. Thank you also for your continued leadership on the important issue of mental health. You really are a leader throughout the whole county on that, and I look forward to working with you in your, in the coming year, and thank you for your job well done.
Thanks, Adam. Councilmember Leighton.
Madam Mayor, I just, I know these events usually focus on your achievements, but I want to take a minute to focus on the person that you are. I think what this room doesn't recognize enough for what happens is that we always tried to say about the accomplishments we do or the taglines as politicians, but from my experience with working with you, what I hope you take out of this year, or what I've taken out of this year under your leadership, is just the sincerity that you want to make everyone's experience who lives in San Carlos better, which is something that most people in your position do not do. It is something most people in your position like the seat because of the name, the recognition that makes comes with it, but I think I speak for lots of people when I say, I'm amazed at how much empathy you put toward the citizens of San Carlos. I'm amazed at how much time and effort you put to try to make this city better, and I always want to remind you that I say no one mayors harder than Sarah McDowell.
Thank you, Neil. Councilmember Dugan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And yeah, I mean, you truly, truly were our ideal centennial mayor. I mean, just, it's a big year for San Carlos, but you were always there at everything and such positive energy, warmth, just really, you know, you were the mayor four years ago, and I really felt like you brought all of that experience and all of your natural leadership to really just bring us together as a community and really allow us to not only celebrate as we did all year long, which was, you know, a great party, really. We also just got so much done, and a lot of that was on your initiative. I really respect what you've done on mental health. You've shared your stories around that, very meaningful, and you've driven real passion through those initiatives, and it has mattered. And, you know, it showed up on your immediate sponsorship of our ban on whippets. So it just, you care, and it always shows. And then we just got so much work done, you know, the Northeast Area Plan we pushed along, the downtown planning, I mean, two specific plans, right? The streetscape and the bigger plan, the Park and Rec Master Plan. I mean, it's, it just kind of goes on and on, and you really were the champion of our public, making sure everyone was involved in that process. And then again, just with such positive warmth, so thank you for that. And county-level leadership, our Library Governing Board, you know, you bring heart to everything. Well, you've also been leading on the Heart Board, which champions affordable housing in the county, so, and you're just a pleasure to work with. So thank you, Madam Mayor, for everything you do.
Thank you. Thank you, John.
Thank you, Mayor McDowell. The Centennial Mayor, there could not have been a more fitting title for you. Mayor Sarah McDowell. San Carlos was truly fortunate to have your steady, compassionate hand during such a historic moment in our city's story. At every event, at every conversation, and through every initiative, you championed and you led with your heart, clarity, and commitment to the people of San Carlos. You're a leader who puts the community first. Like Oliver said, you taught us that public service is not just about policy, it is about humanity. It's about showing up, listening deeply, and making sure every resident feels seen, valued, and included. That is the kind of mayor you have been. You made affordable housing a real priority, ensuring that seniors, young families, and essential workers have a place in San Carlos, a legacy that will shape our city for generations. And you embrace the hardest and most important conversations a city can have: mental health. You helped shape our culture towards compassion, awareness, and real support, reminding us that a strong community cares for the whole person. But your leadership goes far beyond policies and plans. You brought me into the world of public service. You supported me unconditionally, whether it was giving tours to the Girl Scouts, championing youth engagement, or painting and mural downtown. You made sure I felt included, empowered, and capable, because that is who you are: a mayor who thrives on seeing others succeed. Your legacy lives in the streets you helped imagine, the neighborhoods you helped protect, the families you helped house, and the countless people you left up along the way, but most of all, it lives in the spirit of service you inspired in all of us. Mayor McDowell, thank you. For your leadership, for your compassion, for your strength, and for giving us so much of yourself for San Carlos, the city and all of us are better because of you.
I don't know what to say. I'm speechless. Thank you. Thank you so much. That was so nice. So now, it is my great, great honor to call for nominations for our next mayor.
Madam Mayor, it is my great honor to make this historic nomination of Vice Mayor Pranita Venkatesh as the first woman of color to serve as the next mayor of San Carlos. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Crystal, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Leighton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Venkatesh?
Yes.
And Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
Congratulations, Pranita. And now we have Mr. Dean Ballback, Pranita's husband, to do the honors of administering the oath of office to our new mayor.
Please raise your right hand. Ready?
Yes.
Do you solemnly swear that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that you take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which you're about to enter?
Yes.
All right.
Make it official.
Oh, City of Good Luck, even. Wait, you're, oh. Okay. I'll make my comments, I guess. Tonight, I'm filled with deep gratitude, gratitude for this moment, gratitude for this community, and the trust you've placed in me. My story began in a small island, Fiji. When I was four, my parents brought me to California with hope in their hands and a dream for a better life. My dad delivered newspapers before sunrise, worked late into the night, and went to college in between. My mom held our family together with strength that I did not understand until I was older. Their sacrifices were quiet, steady, and constant. They shaped me. Growing up, I didn't always feel like I belonged. I was teased for looking different, for being an immigrant child who didn't know a word of English and brought different food to school. But I also remember the people who showed me kindness, the teachers who believed in me, neighbors who welcomed me and welcomed us, friends and family who helped me be seen. They taught me that belonging isn't about where you were born, it's about how you show up for others, how you listen, and how you care. And so tonight, as the first South Asian woman of San Carlos, mayor, sorry, of San Carlos, I'm not only here as a public servant, but as a product of the community that lifted me. I am here as proof that a young immigrant girl can grow up to be a woman who leads the city she loves. Before I could go any further, I want to take a moment to thank the people who keep the city moving every single day, our city staff, you're out there. From our department heads to the frontline workers, you are the backbone of San Carlos. You are the ones who answer late-night calls, maintain our infrastructure, support our families, protect our neighborhoods, and ensure this community continues to thrive. To our city manager, Jeff Malby, thank you for your extraordinary service to this community. Your leadership, your steady hand, and your deep commitment to San Carlos have shaped the city in profound ways. With your upcoming retirement, we know that finding someone to fill your shoes will not be a small task. Jeff, we are deeply grateful for everything you have given to the city. And tonight, I also stand with deep awareness of what it means to be the first mayor of the next 100 years of San Carlos. Our city just celebrated its centennial, and that comes with responsibility to honor what we've been and to imagine boldly where we are going. We are joined this evening by more than 10 former mayors, leaders who shaped San Carlos we know today. I want to thank each of them for their service, their stewardship, and their enduring love for this community. Over the next year, I hope to earn my place among them through hard work, humility, and a commitment to every resident. To my council colleagues, thank you for your partnership, your trust, and your commitment to the city. We have shared long nights, tough conversations, and meaningful progress. I'm proud of what we built together, and I'm excited for the work ahead. As your mayor, I see a San Carlos that honors diversity, champions our children, builds a vibrant, walkable downtown, and ensures every resident has a voice. We will face challenges, from housing to infrastructure to budget, we will meet them with unity, creativity, and heart. To my family, Dean, Devon, and Ria, you are my heart. Thank you for your love and patience and the countless sacrifices you have made so I could serve. To my husband, Dean, thank you for picking up the pieces when I'm pulled away, your support in me so I can serve our community fully. To my parents, thank you for believing your daughter could have a future bigger than one you left behind. And to my friends and family, thank you for cheering me on. Thank you for believing in me. Thank you for believing in what we can become together. Let's continue building a San Carlos that shines brightly for the next generation, the generation that deserves every chance to dream, to belong, and to thrive.
I don't have any slips, but if there are anyone in the audience who'd like to make a comment, okay, thank you. I don't see any hands. New mayor comments?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to offer my congratulations to you and to wish you much success in the year. We look, I look forward to work, as I know all my other colleagues do, with working with you on the many challenges we have ahead of us and looking to working together as a council, as we always have, under your leadership. So congratulations.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a huge moment for our community, and I am just delighted.
and I am just delighted to congratulate you, Mayor Venkatesh. Over the last year, you and I have hosted several groups of children at City Hall, including many Girl Scout troops, as we saw tonight. And it was important to you and me to show the youth in our community that women could be leaders too. The kids always asked very thoughtful questions and I was consistently reminded that our kids really are paying attention. Representation matters. You may find that your mayorship means more to others than you could have ever possibly imagined. Being a mayor is a lot of work, but it is also an incredibly special experience. Your empathetic and thoughtful leadership will be so great for our city. And I am so proud to congratulate you as our newest mayor.
Councilmember Dugan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and congratulations. And I do appreciate this historic moment. You had a strong year as our vice mayor and I look forward to supporting you every way I can next year as our mayor. I really appreciate the heart you bring to your work on the council. You're, you know, always bring a lot of concern about our families, our children, and our small business. So thank you for bringing all of your experiences and perspective to the work we do. You're a vital voice in our council and for our community. So thank you for that. And I also really enjoyed working with you directly on our downtown subcommittee. We did so much, you know, dozens of meetings. I don't even know, you know, it was hundreds of hours, I think. But I'm really proud of our downtown plan and where all that's going. And you really played a big role with that. And it was really, I enjoyed collaborating with you on that. And I know you're a big part of our Park and Rec Subcommittee. So last year was a big year of planning and I see next year, your year, as a big year of implementation. So we have all this, these great plans and now we have to move them forward. So I really look forward to working with you on that and I'm excited for what comes next.
Councilmember Leighton.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to say first, congratulations for this historic event, for you personally, but for us as a city as well. You have been a great mentor for me, always being available for questions as the newest council member, always being available to give me tips, things that make the work easier or how to influence projects in the city. And for that I will always be grateful for as I started my career. I would also always like to highlight that although you're mainly focused on the city projects, you are also, can never say no. So you have, you are on about every other county board or committee you can be a part of. And I'm more excited as well that you will represent us in such a high fashion as mayor, but also be representing us throughout the county in that same capacity. So I hope I can pay it forward to you, to be supportive of you anyway for everything that you've done for me.
Item 8B. Appoint City of San Carlos to 2026 Vice Mayor. Any public comments?
I do not have any slips at this time, Madam Mayor, but if there's anyone in the public who would like to speak? I don't see any hands, so I think we're okay. Thank you.
Okay, call for nominations.
Madam Mayor, I nominate Adam Rack as the City of San Carlos's Vice Mayor.
Second.
Roll call?
Yes. Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Leighton?
Yes.
Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
And Mayor Venkatesh?
Yes.
Thank you. Adam Rack, I have the honor of administering the oath of office to you. If you could raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear to support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic? That you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California? That you take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion? And that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties for which you're about to enter?
I do.
Congratulations.
I mean, the downside is Crystal has candy and tissues and all kinds of fun stuff over there, so, but worth the change. Oh my gosh.
Do we vote now? Here, it's your comment.
I really, I did not really prepare anything because I really wanted to focus on the mayor for this year. And I just want to thank my colleagues for their support. I look forward to supporting Mayor Venkatesh in her, in her work and the work of the city and look forward to a successful year. And I'm ready to go. We should go celebrate the new mayor.
Item 9, agenda setting. Oh, oh, do you have a, oh, sorry. Councilmember McDowell.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, congratulations to Adam. I know your experience and deep knowledge of our city and our work will be a really valuable support to Mayor Venkatesh this year. You both will make a great leadership team for 2026. So congratulations to you.
Adam, I just need to say that it's my first rodeo, so I'm going to call on you for a lot this year to help me out. So I'm very excited.
Councilmember Dugan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and congratulations, Adam, on your second vice mayorship. And I look for, it's been a really good year. Again, lots of deep planning, so I look forward to working with you and Mayor Venkatesh on all the great implementation next year. And just on a personal note, I've really enjoyed the deep work we've been doing on the Trails Subcommittee and all the new opportunities we're finding in town. And I look forward to continuing that. And I appreciate the leadership you're showing on CKEG, helping to steer some funds our direction. So that's good stuff. President of CKEG and also the leadership you showed on the Holly 101 situation and conditions and midterm plan and now long-term plan. So thank you for that.
Councilmember Leighton.
Councilmember Rack, just want to say congratulations. Vice Mayor Rack wants to say congratulations. But more importantly, I am excited about the team between you and the mayor and all your experiences. And I look forward to working with you again for a year. And I don't want to hold up the party any longer.
Agendas, agenda setting. Any members of the council have anything adjourned? Get the gavel? Okay. If the former mayors can gather in the hall for a group photo, please, in the foyer? Oh, inside. We're going to be inside here. If the former mayors can please come to the podium.